Evening, everyone. It is December 7th. The time is 6:03 PM. And this is the Akushna Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on our YouTube channel and I guess on the cable network. Can I get a motion to open the plan board meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Not everybody's here, but we do have a quorum. You introduce yourself.
Are we on live Zoom?
No Zoom tonight.
No Zoom tonight.
No Zoom tonight.
Dave Dvigna, member?
Mark Francois, chairman.
Brian DeChamps, member?
Okay. Let's go right into the meeting minutes. Did you guys have a chance to look over the October 5th minutes? Everybody was in attendance except Rick was absent. Rick Ellis was absent.
Yeah, I left them over. I'm making a motion to approve.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a chance to look over the October 19th minutes? Everybody was in attendance.
I'm making a motion to approve.
You got a motion?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to commend Paul Sullivan. He does great job.
He really does.
Yes, he does.
That's really excellent.
And I like it when you guys are able to give your, you know, critique prior to the meeting and all has the opportunity to fix some things. And it kind of makes the meeting go by a lot quicker. And did we have an opportunity to look over the November 2nd meeting minutes? Everybody was in attendance. Dave, you were on via Zoom.
The only one, the only comment I had on this was that you should, you know, we should have a pool abstain. It was four row on page two. It originally just said vote was four, not something like one abstention. I should say.
Oh, right there.
Yeah, Rick did it for a reason. He wanted to not vote around.
Okay.
Otherwise, the man's vote will be done again and make motion to approve.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, no correspondence. Discussion of the topics. Okay, A and R 202308 for land at 733 Main Street, MAP 20, Lot 23. Zenith Land Surveys LLC, 1162 Rockdale Avenue in Bedford, Mass. Drawn for Carol Laurel. Owner 24 Aspen Ave, Dartmouth, Mass.
Good evening, gentlemen. John Romanelli, Zenith Land Surveys here representing Carol Laurel, the owner of 733 Main Street. This is over by the golf course. Carol's own this land and inherited it many years ago. And over time, we have cut out a Form A for her son Chris. This is her daughter Tracy. She's got plenty of room left. She's got two more children that she's going to eventually Form A something out of here for them when they're ready to go. Her good family friend Alan Perry owns the collision repair next door. And he had asked Carol this summer if he could buy a portion of this before she went and did anything else because he wanted to create some type of a screening with Green Giants or something to that effect to kind of hide any future development and hide his place of business. So they came to an agreement to do this. It's a non-buildable parcel. It's 39,032 square feet. It only carries 15 feet of furniture to it. I'm assuming he's going to keep that in a separate ownership. But that's the intent of this plan is to create that non-buildable parcel and let it be sold off to Mr. Perry.
Question?
Please.
I was just curious, the distance left between that lot and the other lot?
211 across here.
211, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so you made the 150.
Yep.
And that lot's vacant in the middle? Is that true?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, she bought that, I think in 2012.
That's where the old house used to be, right there, right?
Yeah, definitely, right. It looks like he might be occupying some of the land too with the trucks.
Yeah.
Driving by and you can see like.
Yeah, it's close.
So clean it up kind of.
Yeah, and there's no wetlands.
He looks like he could use the room.
Yes.
Got a parking lot.
Yeah.
Isn't that still any wetlands there up here in the corner?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve the plan and twist it.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Super.
All right, you guys sign.
Sign the Mylar? Yeah, one of them is getting the Mylar.
Yeah, get the Mylar here.
You guys have scheduled another meeting before Christmas or no?
Depends if anything comes in.
I had a client ask me today if.
Yeah, you have something else in the pipeline, don't you?
I do. Now, right now, I can't tell you what it is, but I know somebody asked me this week.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I mean, like any meeting, if nothing comes up, then obviously we cancel and move on. But if there is something, yes, I think there is one scheduled for the 21st.
I'll check my books tomorrow and see who called me.
They don't wait that long. Yeah. I bet it doesn't work good.
Doesn't?
Does proof of recording of the Mylar go to Paul? Or does it go to the clerk? Or he's always just give it to?
The Mylar?
No, but I think, I can't remember who used to request it. It was Henry Young or whatnot, but when we recorded, he wanted proof.
Oh, proof of recording at the registry, indeed, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not as sure if that we still do that practice.
It's elastic, one of them. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, I look at it this way. Signature of the plan doesn't mean anything. Recording the plan means nothing until they actually transfer deeds.
True.
It's, you know, they record it and then it. The only people that really need is the assessors office for assessment change.
Right.
So, but I guess, and we don't have a time plan or something. I mean, it's good to, yeah, it's good to get the recording info, I guess, just for Kelly, just for Kelly's purposes, so she knows.
That's what I'm doing to Kelly.
Yeah, I guess.
I'll just grab the first three or four. Make them all the same. You're all set with that mileage, huh?
Great. Thanks a bunch, guys. If you don't have a meeting, I'll see you next year.
You got it.
Did somebody dig the top of that?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why we need 10 copies.
That's a really old.
Then they keep, I was just going to say, then they don't.
What do you need 10 copies? I can see maybe four or five distributed from the departments.
Yeah.
But 10 copies is a bit much, I think.
There's one town. When you do a CBA application, you want 18 copies of everything.
Really?
All pack and everything like. And one time I brought in 15 and I got the call, you're showing three. I'm like, where are you going?
That's a lot.
Distribute every department of possibly the deed.
Police Department, School Department, Library Department, Police Department.
That's what it's like when you get up to Wellsley and Needham and up in New In. I know we went, you should go through.
You know, the latest thing that towns are starting to do, Dartmouth does it now, Wetland Way, is an electronic submitter, submittal for like conservation. And you have to do it into a portal and then it goes automatically to all the departments.
So they're doing away with the actual?
They only want two copies.
Yeah, so that's.
You know, that's, that's it. Everything gets dispersed and then, you know, other departments look at it like BBW or some water problem and you get common. It works, you know, it works pretty good.
Digital age, you know?
Yeah.
My son is the IT at Dartmouth. He does all that stuff.
Where, Dartmouth?
Yeah.
There are some glitches though. Like when you go on the website. If you're doing a certificate compliance, you have to find the property first, but if the property doesn't have an address, it's hard to locate it. And it's like the needle in a haystack kind of search to find it. Because there are some like beachfront properties across the street from a house. They don't have an address.
Right, right.
And it's like, once you find it, then it attaches your application to. It pulls up the file number from the prior. It's like, it's pretty, I mean, pretty.
I think we're a long way from that. All right, next, that was A. This is letter B. Right of first refusal. 474 Middle Road. On November 20th, 2023, the Board of Selectmen received a purchase and sales agreement as a bona fide offer for the town's right of first option from attorney Nicholas A. Gomes. In regard to the above-mentioned property for Carolyn Moore, owner, the Board of Selectmen requests the board's recommendation. This is one of those formalities that we go through. It goes through the planning board, goes through Conservation, Board of Assessors. And then, once we all make our determination, it goes back to the selectmen and then they make their final determination. I don't know. You guys have any questions, comments, concerns?
The only input I would, I have is that I did look on Mass, GIS, Mass Mapper. This lot, this property has a heavy set of wetlands on it. Heavy area of wetlands. It also has the high tension wires along the right side and it kind of cuts the lot out, some of the upland to the far back. It's a tough site, even if we have a bunch of money floating around, I don't think the town would, I don't think it has any value for the town whatsoever.
Okay, well said. I agree. I also looked on Mass Mapper and, yeah, it looks complicated. I would entertain a motion to forego the first right of refusal.
So move.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, unanimous. Okay. This next one, Planning Board Fee Schedule Discussion. I mean, we can still discuss if you'd like. I was hoping to have at least a full board. If not a full board, then the majority of the members here. Well, I guess the majority is here, but I guess I'd like to have a few more to vote on this. I mean, six or seven months back, we went through all the forms that are going to be posted online for A and R's, for subdivisions, for, for everything. And then the only thing that we had left was the fee schedule on what it would cost for roadway linear fee, what it would cost for a surety from the proponent of the town. What do you think? You want to discuss it? Do you want to hold off until we get a full board or relatively close to full board?
I'd like to take five minutes and just discuss it.
Please.
And continue the matter to the full board. And I'm sure the members will watch the meeting anyway and then I won't have to repeat myself.
Agreed. Go for it.
The first thing I want to point out is that in the fee schedule that we have, it's, it requires that it be submitted as part of the application. And that is like putting the cart before the horse tenfold.
Where did you see that?
It, this is.
So the way planning board actually.
Planning Board fee schedule. And then when you go through here, you go Form A, Form C, subdivision plans, $400 plus 75 per lot and then below that.
Yeah, that's good.
And it's listed under amendment. It wouldn't be an amendment, number one. This would be surety after the project's approved prior to construction. So that's the first thing we need to fix before we decide a fee. And, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair to ask. You know, just for the example that Paul gave us, Moneys Estates, approximately 1,900 linear feet of road. Be based on the $10, that's $19,000 from the give as an application fee. That makes no sense.
I agree that it shouldn't be.
It gives the impression it's listed as a pre-application.
Yeah, it does. And that's why I was.
That would be a condition of approval, like a solar fund.
Correct.
That they have to put it up.
That's what I would feel. Yeah, we'd have to go through the plans, approve the plans, approve the road. The road might get shorter, it might get lengthened, you never know.
Yes.
Right.
So I think. Might get denied.
Exactly.
And then they're stuck without getting their money, you know?
Absolutely. So I definitely think it shouldn't be part of the application process. It definitely should be, once the plans are approved, then an assurity should be put into place before a building permit or anything is.
Right.
That I agree.
All right. So the other comment I had is that Paul pointed out, he did a great job giving us a little feedback here. 2004, it was set at $6. 2010, it was increased to $10 a linear foot. I remember seeing something from other towns that saw some that were at.
Correct.
Three, five, they're all over the map.
Correct.
But really, what's really helpful is the recent example he gave us of Moneys Estates, where they put $19,233 in escrow. To date, they've used 9,649, so they used about half.
No, they put in 21.
Oh, I'm reading off of his.
Oh, yeah, this is been updated. So they actually put in, they originally put in 19,233.
Okay.
And then for some reason, they added a 2,000 for the hydraulic analysis, which was paid straight out.
Okay.
And so they've a total, they've put in a total of 21,233. And so far, a total of 12,731 has gone out, which leaves them a difference of $8,500, more or less, give or take. And the project isn't completed yet. So they've, they've used more than half of their money, assurances. And, you know, as you know, most of the road has already been completed.
Yeah. Now, what's left to be done? Because that, that subdivision actually is the true. I, I, do we have bills, invoices, did he?
Yeah, absolutely. I have them already, already here, as a matter of fact. They got all the bills and invoices that were paid. These were all by.
Who did the work? Was it SW Cole?
Yes, all SW Cole.
Okay.
Yeah, all for SW Cole.
Okay.
And then shows the bills, shows the receipts.
Yes, I was curious as to what kind of service they, you know, what. Number one was, you know, everything that was done and it was thorough. Maybe we could find out from SW Cole, like.
What they have.
What's left.
Well.
And then come up with a number that's more accurate.
The thing that I, the way I see it, and I wasn't sure in the beginning, was you put up this money, you use some of it, do you get the rest back?
Yes, you do.
Okay. At first, I was like, wait, do we keep the money? Does the town keep the money or do you get it back?
That's a, that's a done deal because I remember, I won't name names, but a friend of mine had a, a road that he had, I think it was just a cul-de-sac. And we did $10 of, what do you think? He did $10 of, it was only 75 feet of road. So it was 750 bucks. It was an escrow. And he called me up one day or sent me a text and said, he said, "The town tells me that they got like 600 bucks of my money. Do I want?" I'm like, what's that from? And I'm like, oh, it's going to be that account that you put the money in, you know? It's been sitting there, it's sat in this account for like a decade.
Now that you mention that.
You get it back though.
There are still some outstanding that we have here. And Paul, because we're going through hiring a new treasurer and kind of, we're hiring new people here. When that gets resolved, Paul, one of Paul's missions is to look up all of the projects that are completed and people don't realize that they still have 200, $300,000 still sitting in our account. That needs to be returned to them. So that's one thing that Paul's going to take care of. When it comes to this, I think, and again, let's use Mr. Moneys as an example. He's over there doing a relatively large subdivision. Expensive homes, really nice, going to be beautiful.
And it was a fully compliance.
And a fully compliant.
Because he intends to turn it over to the town.
Right.
But that's, that's the other thing I want to bring up is that when you have like a private road.
Totally different.
Draw a road, it's like you.
Totally different.
What, what are we doing?
Totally different. Because none of these.
Things are going to happen.
Yeah, none of these tests are going to happen during that. So it's a whole different ball of wax.
Yeah, it's a lot like a common driveway.
Right, exactly. I think we should treat it as such, where this, when somebody comes in. And again, that's why we would do it after the plans are approved because then we know exactly what kind of road it is.
Okay.
I think when, I don't think $20,000, $21,000 for a development the size of his is a lot to ask, especially since, let's just say he does nothing else. Okay, you get eight grand back. I think there's, I think it's better to have more in the account than less. It's not here, but I actually saw the, the meeting minutes of way back when of 2000, when they first changed it to $10. 2010, I saw the meeting minutes that Paul had brought up and it says in there, it says, you know, if needed, the contractor will add more.
Okay.
I don't, I'd rather not, I'd rather be in abundance.
Yeah.
And give back than saying, hey, you owe us this.
I don't, I don't disagree, but if, right now, they're at $5 and they've used half of the money, I don't want to be excessive. It might be in the middle of the ground, middle of the road.
Like $7.
Paul did the math on this and if he were to stop right now, it's a little over $7 a foot that he's used, so.
So how do you come up with that number? Because this number is five.
I don't know. I saw it at the office. He had, I don't know exactly how, know how he did the math, but he told me that it comes out to relatively $7 a square foot if he were to stop right now. But even at 5.7, again, we can vote when the board is all together. But if 10 is a little much, I think two is a little too less. Not enough.
Oh, clearly, whatever this number is, I would say we had a couple more.
Yeah, I think we should be in that $7 to $8 range.
Yeah.
And, and then it would.
I mean, if, you know, if, maybe he can contact Tibbetts, I mean SW Cole, and see what they estimate. Yeah, whoever's been doing inspections is going to have a general idea. Oh, yeah, I just got to do, I got to go test the top cove and.
And the sidewalks, yeah.
Right, and then, then we have a total number. And if it, if it's currently at, and it really isn't going to change much from seven, then we can decide on what to do.
Right, okay. All right, yeah.
You know, I mean.
We can do a little bit more research.
It's split, and here's, you know, a buck here, a buck there.
Right, right. And when you're talking a development like that.
Yes.
20 grand is peanuts.
Yeah.
Again, if you're talking to a private person, a private road.
Yeah.
Or, or, or a three-house common drive, that's a whole different ball of wax. That doesn't, I don't think, fall under this. And again, we would know that at the end of the approval plan.
Yeah.
And we could go that route, so.
Okay.
All right, well, I think, you know, we all come to a good conclusion.
I think my biggest thing with the 10 was paying that upfront, because that's.
Yeah, I didn't.
You know what I mean? Like, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about if we left with it then, I'm okay with it.
I don't, I agree, it shouldn't be.
The way it's listed, it says you need to submit it and it doesn't make any sense.
No, I think they should cover front of us. Things change, the vote like.
That'd be like telling a solar company, give us a million dollar bond when you supply the, when you apply for the permit.
Yeah, 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 you can't do that.
I don't think it was intended that way, but it just, that's the way the list is.
Yeah, no, and I definitely think that should be changed. And I think Paul did add in here, which wasn't originally in here, where it says $10 per linear first proposed fee in the form of certified or cashier's check payable to the town of Akushna. This fee will be used to set up an escrow account to cover the costs of advertising.
It wouldn't be advertisement though.
No, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, that's where it's, there's a crossover here, you know?
But he put in here, unused monies will be returned to.
Yes.
Subdivisor, which that originally wasn't in there, so that would have.
Yes, because it goes into a 53G account. And then that account, that's nothing more different, no different than a peer review account.
Right.
But yeah, it wouldn't be for advertisement. It would be professional services.
Inspection.
Consistent of inspection and inspection and testing of roadway utilities.
Yeah, okay, so we'll get advertising out of here. We'll try to rewrite this somehow to where.
And then up here should say. You know, it really shouldn't say a Form C amendment, subdivision plan. It should say something like 53G account to be set up or, I don't know, it's got to be reworded.
It's going to be reworded as like an surety, post, postapproval.
Construction control peer review fee or something like that.
Yeah, okay. But it definitely got to be written in here somewhere where it doesn't have to come in right at the application.
Yeah, a little, like, you know, a little.
Yeah.
No, right, lower of the brackets. To be determined upon approval of subdivision.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And prior, to be submitted prior to construction.
Yeah.
I mean, there've been subdivisions in town that were approved and they never did anywhere.
Yeah, 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 exactly. All right, very good. All right, gentlemen. Enough discussion with that one. We'll table that for the next full meeting. Current planning, nothing. Long range planning, nothing. Other business, nothing. Our next meeting, if anything comes across our desk, will be on Thursday, December 21st. Any other topics anybody wants to discuss or bring up?
No, sir.
I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
6:30. Goodnight, everyone.